Is the seven o'clock on nineteen August? And we'll kick the meeting off here. A couple of points of order. We'll do an introduction of the board members. And I'll be requesting that anybody that wants to speak, does go to the microphone. I've been listening to a couple of the online versions. And it's really hard to pick up the audio from anybody sitting in the audience, speaking from the audience. So I will ask that you please come up to the center table area there so the microphone will pick you up. I'll also be sending a comm, an email on that to all the board chairs. So that we can continue to work to have that on all the planning boards, select board, CONCOM and the ZBA so we can ensure that everybody can hear it as we transpire. Hoby Harmon, Chair of the Board.
Mark Castor.
Catherine Tenowski.
All right. First item on the agenda tonight, special event permit ordinance. This will be the second hearing. And I'll read through this again. Special event permit ordinance, section one, purpose. The purpose of this policy is to establish guidelines and procedures for the issuance of permits for large meetings, shows, competitions, events and functions by the Newfield Select Board. The town of Newfields has a legitimate interest in protecting the public health, safety and welfare of its citizens and visitors who may be at risk from such gatherings which may be held from time to time in the community. Such gatherings must provide for orderly and safe use of public streets, list safety, life safety preparedness and adequate parking and sanitary facilities for use by those members of the public. Section two, authority. The Newfield Select Board is granted authority under RSA 286 to require the issuance of permits for various types of events before such events are permitted to take place within the community. Furthermore, the Newfields Police Chief is granted authority under RSA 105:9 to require police details for such events determined by the chief to potentially, A, involve traffic-related problems, or B, lead to a public disturbance or public nuisance, or C, endanger public health, safety or welfare, and assess the sponsor with the cost of such police details. Lastly, the Newfields Fire Chief is granted authority under RSA 153 state barcode and applicable National Fire Protection Association codes and standards to regulate outdoor events, carnivals, fairs and indoor public assemblies. Section three, definitions. A, a special event is a meeting, show, competition, event or other function as defined under RSA 286:1, 286:2, or 105:9, whether held indoors or outdoors, that is held on public or private property or streets that can reasonably be expected to cause a public gathering of fifty or more persons that is not part of the normal course of business at that location. Special events shall not include, and I can't say again, special events shall not include private family events such as weddings, funerals, graduation parties, et cetera, property owned by the family, or two, fundraising events for religious or other charitable organizations that are located in Newfields when the entirety of the event takes place at the facility of that organization. B, a community event is a special event sponsored in whole or in part by the town of Newfields. Section four, permit requirement. All special events within the town of Newfields require a permit from the Newfield Select Board. All applications for special events in the town of Newfields shall be reviewed by the town staff as appointed by the Newfield Select Board, which should include the police chief, fire chief, road agent, and when applicable, the health officer. Section five, application procedure. A, all requests for a special event permit shall be submitted in writing to the Newfields Town Clerk on an application form approved by the select board a minimum thirty days prior to the event. B, such application form will provide requirements and guidelines for the following types of special event plans. One, site plan. Two, security crowd control. Three, traffic control parking ban. Four, fire emergency plan. Five, ambulance medical service plan. Six, ticket distribution plan. Seven, sanitary facilities plan. Eight, alcohol food service plan. Upon receipt, upon receipt by the Newfields Town Clerk of a completed application and required application fee, applications shall be distributed to the police chief, fire chief, road agent, and when applicable, the health officer. Section six, guidelines for review. The town shall act on all applications for special events in accordance with section two through four to ensure compliance with all state laws. Town ordinances and specific requirements necessary to ensure adequate public safety at special events. B, certain requirements may be waived when in the best interest of the town of Newfields. C, the town may recommend certain restrictions, exceptions and conditions prior to the application being considered by the select board. D, breach of terms and conditions of any permit issued by the town of Newfields Select Board may be subject to a fine of up to $150. E, failure to obtain a permit for an event covered under provisions of RSA 286 or of this policy shall be subject to a fine up to $50. At, a certificate of insurance showing the carrier and the amount of liability insurance will be required and a permit will not be issued until the certificate of insurance is received. The certificate of insurance shall specifically name the town of Newfields as an initial insured and must state the name and date of the event. G, non-performance or non-completion of said exceptions or conditions or addition of event activities, spectators or participants beyond those specifically reviewed as part of the application review process may be cause for permit revocation at any time before or during the event. Section seven, fees. Every applicant shall pay in advance a fee of $50 for such application review. Community events shall not be charged the permit fee. Special duty service fees. A, the application fee does not include the cost of fire or police protection or any other extra town expense required to protect the health and safety of the public, which can reasonably be attributed to the event. All such costs associated with the use of active and stationary emergency and other services provided by the town of Newfields or by other towns' emergency services shall be borne by the applicant, promoter or sponsor. B, in the event that special duty emergency response or protection coverage is provided by a nearby municipality on behalf of the town of Newfields, an invoice will also be submitted by that municipality for the services provided, which shall be paid in a timely manner by the applicant, promoter or sponsor. C, a history of non-payment or late payment of any application fee and/or special duty services is grounded in any request for future events permits. Input from the board.
I have two things. I'm still looking at the end of the second paragraph in section one where it says, "for use by those members of the public." I feel like those words somehow exempt somebody. And maybe that should end with sanitary facilities, period. Because we're not just protecting the people who are participating in the event, but also people driving by and other people who might be in the area. So I feel like for use by those members of the public, who does that actually leave out? Or all members of the public if it needs to stay? But it's just my thought on that.
So you're recommending striking those or replacing with all?
All, yeah, by all members of the public. So that includes participants and non-participants?
If we change this, do we have to read this again?
We have to read it. Third reading, Mr. Speaker.
The other part. My question is, if I rent my home in Newfield and don't own it, do I still? I'm at section three definitions. Special events shall not include, number one, private family events such as weddings, funerals, graduation parties on property owned by the family or residentially rented by the family? Because if I'm a renter and I'm a resident, do I have the same exclusion? Or do I have to get a special event permit if I don't own my home?
I would say a rental would be fall within the exception.
Okay.
It's on their property, residents.
Not something you rented for the event, but residentially rented.
Yep, or residentially rented by the family.
Yeah. Oh, yeah.
Any other thoughts? It is here. Anything else from the board, Mark?
No.
Okay, Ken?
Yes, that's right. So as an organizer who runs the contra dance, one month here in town, and we seem to have an ongoing permit with the town for a rental agreement, if you will. Hearing the exclusions, I didn't think that included us. That would indicate that we'd have to file a $50 fee to request this gathering. And sometimes it's under 50 and sometimes it's over 50. Where would that kind of an event stand?
What I would like to give this is take it for advisement and review it and then get back to you at the next reading. Because I think we can come up with an amenable solution, but it's going to take a little research.
Yeah, and I realize this is just kind of a, and a gray, it's not so gray the way the reading you just did.
And this event, your contra dances did come to mind after I was reminded of it by somebody?
Thanks, somebody.
Very well. Does that work for you, sir? We'll take it on.
And I see like our next dance will probably be before your next meeting and this regulation will not be in effect until after such as?
We'll have a third reading at the next meeting. We'll close the public reading and then we'll have discussion on a Boden. Okay, so the next select board meeting is on the second?
Are there other community events that are not directly operated by the town of Newfields that would similarly be affected by?
That comes to mind.
The Celebration Committee is a part, that is part of the town of Newfields.
Yes, as is the Fall Festival, Halloween, et cetera, et cetera.
And maybe the contra dance should be a part of the town.
I think a good way to make that happen is to ensure the room is all set up when you're done with it.
We did, that could be performed. I might mean I have to stay and do it, but I do have these 50 bucks, right? Well, the 50 bucks would be already paying.
I think, I think we can find a solution for this.
Okay, we'll discuss something else now.
Yeah, thank you, sir. Anything else on this?
It says a community event, special event sponsored in whole or by part of the town of Newfields. Yeah, so it could be a quasi-town event, you know?
I think we can work that. Any other comments?
In this process of looking at this, we might want to take a retrospective on the last year or two of what town hall rentals purposes have been and whether any of those would fall under this that haven't in the past, similar to the contra dance.
Well, I know, I know such entities as the Newfield Boy Scouts don't get charged fees. Political parties do get charged fees.
The political parties, that crossed my mind.
Yeah, they do get charged fees and they will get.
You don't know when they're going to be 50, 49, 50, 51?
Political parties that rent town halls are charged. Who else? Yeah, I mean, there's nobody, if it's a Newfields organization, they are not charged.
Usually have their birthday parties, their funeral after.
Such as veterans, so the veterans organization, there would not be a charge. So if it's a Newfields entity, they're waived from paying the fee.
And if there's discretion as well?
Yeah.
So if there's discretion to waive the fee, we just want to check our gray areas so that that discretion is given out evenly in a fair way.
Yep. Mr. Lawrence?
In that we seem to be talking about town hall events at the moment. I don't recall exactly the verbiage in the agreement to use the town hall, but it describes some of these things that are discussed in this. And that may be able to cover events that are here. Alcohol, non-alcohol, policing, I don't recall whether there's anything in there about policing. And it might be if there is alcohol.
All right, let's slide, let's slide the town hall rental to a separate category, but I think we can review it and find a solution. In that case, I'll make a motion that we close the special second reading.
Mm-hmm.
Second, all in favor? Good job on getting up the microphone. Okay, correspondence discussion, next officio. We have a planning board meeting that transpired on 14 August, Cat.
Just pulling up my notes. It seems like a very active meeting. The site plan amendment from the River Smokehouse was further discussed in terms of their transferring the use of the home for their one residential use at that property instead of the apartment with the garage. And what was asked of them was to produce the septic report that would show that the septic system actually supports that before it could be conditionally, it's conditionally approved based on that.
And that did arrive today and it's approved. It met the requirements.
It did. The mobile lighting discussion, we are, back at the starting point in terms of having decided to send a letter. Mobile did express a desire to come and discuss their lighting issue. And they looked at the minutes and decided that what they did was within the scope of what they got permission to do, but there's disagreement about that. The board does not support that perspective. And they're going to be asked to essentially respond in keeping with, we don't agree that that was approved in the way that it's being used. And it may result in coming to the select board for enforcement or they may voluntarily decide to unplug the lights that they shouldn't have proceeded to put up. And it's a work in progress. We definitely talked about some changes in the legislation with regard to the ADU law changes, things that affect how decisions will get made, things that are in direct conflict with current zoning language and who, whose role it is to oversee, particularly things that the building inspector did not have responsibility for, that the way the law was written puts the building inspector responsible for. And the recommendations with that land on needing the town to reword some parts of our ordinances to eliminate conflicts where we can and where it makes sense to, and also to really sort of push back for clarity in ways that we will need to. And for the town to look at the big picture in terms of resources and the effects of how some of these changes would impact the quality of life here. For example, adequate parking, adequate water supply if some of these changes get enacted by residents trying to move forward. So that is going to have a rippling effect and it's going to require the town to look more closely at the zoning wording and our land use wording. And with the support of our attorney and even looking at other small communities like ours for what they're already doing to address these concerns. Because if we don't have to reinvent the wheel because the neighboring town is already on top of it, then we want to benefit from what they're, what they're figuring. Some towns like Brentwood are paying a lot in legal fees and exploration to make plans that work. And we may benefit from the investment that they make in their community to learn from what they're doing. But it is going to require some ongoing action by the town and the voters by the time our next session comes, comes ahead. We did approve Mike Sununu as an alternate planning board member and that has been moved up to the select board for review. Glenn did send around his first thick draft of the SIP update, which essentially, for people who don't know what that is, all of the departments in town, all of the separate entities that are part of the town have an opportunity to look ahead at the next several years for what their vision is, what their needs are, and so that we can proactively plan and be thoughtful about how those things will impact our, our budget and our functioning as a town. So that will be going out to the town departments and they will have time to respond based on what they see as needs and what their vision is over the next couple of years. See, we talked a little bit about some changes that are happening to things, basically updates that are also being followed by the select board around work on, on this building, particularly fence moving, the IV and the structural stuff. Some of that got touched on in the meeting as well and it'll get followed up here, I'm sure. And then there was a conversation about table one in 4.7 of our RSAs that talk about, I believe that is the table around sound ordinance. Yep, and there's perhaps some clarifying that will also need to be done because it, it seems like there's room for clarity to be further defined in terms of our commercial and residential agricultural areas and how we are describing what's allowed and what's not allowed. And if we're doing a thorough enough job at that. And there is an RFQ out for?
The rain gardens.
The rain gardens, thank you. And you know, and my question was where are we, right? Because this is pertinent to a conversation from our last meeting around where the RFQs are getting posted and how we might be more involved. Yeah, how we might just in general be able to collect more quotes and have a more competitive process and feel like we have more choices when we're looking at these things. Everything of the type.
And Attorney Durbin has sent our letter to the ZBA and to the town dealing with his interpretation and impact of the changes by the state in regards to so. So I'll just touch that for now. Because we have a long agenda.
Just this evening, I did a text to Derek to just confirm because in his response, it covered everything that I anticipated. His response did not cover the square footage. Ours, because of our previous ordinance, allowed for the possibility of more than 950. And that, in Derek's opinion, stands. So that's the only thing beyond, in Derek's letter that is not addressed. But it is rather complete in his addressing the other factors that we just have to watch out for. And I think his recommendation is we just don't allow that state standards to supersede ours until the planning board and the people can vote for the changes.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any questions on that, Mark, on the planning board?
Oh, you know, I guess putting that in writing to Derek would be a good idea to just make that apparent if there is some kind of change that needs to be.
There's a letter that Derek wrote.
Yeah, but you're saying there's some kind of change that you want to implement?
Just saying, one of, one of the conditions of our ordinance still stands.
Okay.
And a little bit confusing part is what part of the state does the state's statute overlay our entire ordinance? It does to a point, but some of our ordinance still stands while most of it does not. I say most of it, some of it does comply.
What is going to take precedent? Is it going to be the state or is it going to be the town?
It's a combination of both.
Read Derek's letter.
Yeah.
That'll clarify.
That'd be helpful, yes.
It's not a long read and, and that's the only thing I came up with that Derek hadn't addressed. I had addressed it with the building inspector. So I think we're on solid ground.
Yeah, okay.
All right, if anything from the audience? I'll take that as a no. Moving on to the Conservation Commission meeting last night.
Yeah, relatively short meeting. One footnote that I sent out an email to, to just reaching out to any of the, any of the groups like CONCOM. If there is an agenda that's sent to Sue, that, that, that kind of triggers the recording for going forward. So that was just, we had a little bit of a glitch with recording yesterday's meeting. Christine McDate is our new treasurer and she had just discussed reaching out to Sue to get some more information as far as the, all the data that's, that David had previously. And she's going to be reaching out to Sue on that. Kucher, no longer part of CONCOM and had stepped down as chair. So they were discussing who will be chosen as a new chair. Allison Watts had volunteered to be a co-chair. So that's to be determined. And they'll make that decision moving forward. I also mentioned to CONCOM about approaching the railroad CSX for obtaining some property. And they kind of volleyed that back to us to say, well, you should reach out to CSX.
I've got, I've got that on open items for later on, to set it more detail.
Okay, and that is really it. It was a relatively short meeting. I think they just have to get their ducks in order or in a row as far as who's doing what. And we'll, we'll have a more assembled CONCOM in the next meeting.
What I would like to do, Cat, because of this long agenda tonight, is slide the legislative meeting ramp up till the second. If we can do that, just because of the duration that we've got tonight. If that's fine with you? Okay, next item on the agenda is bid protocol, W5, who, what, when, run, why and how? Even though that's an H. All right, so reviewing the way we handle this as a town, both conversation with Sue and conversation with Kisha. Any RFQs, any requests for services, any requests for contracts is always posted on the town website. And it also always goes in the newspaper with the one exception of heating oil. Kisha searches the internet for local vendors and she will call the vendors, call the vendors to inform them of the RFQ. And she always calls at least three vendors, more often than not more. The RFQ window is 30 days. As an example, on the mowing contract, which we dealt with at the last select board meeting, that was, met all those requirements. It was on the town website, it was in the newspaper, the Seacoast Online. I have a copy of the billing statement right here and the rough pre-submission. The, Kisha searched for the internet for local vendors and also made calls to vendors.
And they emailed.
And she emailed. So an allegation that this was not completed at the last select board meeting was erroneous as far as the factual history of it. The one thing that we will be doing and that we talked about, and this came up in the audit, that the audit records did not show that we had sought out three vendors. And the reason for that is not because we did not seek three vendors for all events, but once we awarded the contract, then the other two vendors' names kind of fell off the side of the table because there was no point in keeping them. Now we've reached a protocol where all three vendors or more or four or five, those names will be recorded so that when the auditors come through, we can clearly demonstrate to the audit that, for the audit, that this was, we met all requirements. So that covers what our bid protocol is. Anything from the board?
Do we have a, a point at which we might feel like we're not getting a, a good enough response? That we might go a second level using social media and, and our town email to our local residents to prompt? If we're ever feeling like, hey, we're just not getting enough of a response?
The public say have a deadline, just a minute.
Right.
So people wait till the last?
We can't wait.
Right. You know that they're not going to?
Right, right.
The only thing I would say.
Several places, sure. It's in the newspaper.
I came, I mean, I, I think by law it was supposed to list it in the newspaper, right? But I came from the newspaper industry and. But it came from the newspaper industry and those ads are not necessarily looked at as as readily as something that might be posted online. So, I mean, I don't think we, I don't think we obviously did anything wrong. I think that we could just maybe do a better job at broadcasting it. So we do have a better selection, a more competitive bidding.
And I can also point out, so I only did three. Oil bids I sent out to eight people, we got two or three back.
Which is good.
Painting, I sent out to twelve because of the size of the day job. So I do submit in several places. I feel that I do reach out to people before it gets to the paper. So not everyone's responding.
I think one, one thing I may throw out here when we get, because that's one of the items I want to talk about later. It's this new website we're getting. It is possible and not knowing nor wanting to know or have anything to do with that. But maybe set up a specific section on the town website, RFQs.
Yeah, right.
Sorry, I just wanted to go more into it. We do have a big RFQ section. It's there for anybody who wants to look up to see what bits are.
Totally understand. It's it's not really visible. You'd have to search for it. So I'm thinking maybe on the homepage, RFQs are, here's a place to buy it as a selection.
I would think that businesses that are soliciting to town select websites.
Exactly. And, you know, you can lead a horse to water. I think we're doing, they're doing an exceptional job downstairs, meeting all the requirements, both the state law and the auditors and getting people, especially since COVID, to step up and do a job is a challenge. So I would I would offer kudos to the work. The people who are doing on this. I think they've done a very good job and we can't, we can bring the horse to the water, we can't make a drink.
Yeah.
Okay, any other input? Anything from the audience? We will consider that better closed. Next item on the agenda is we have a planning board alternate applicant. And we have Michael Sanunu of Newfields. He has come from the recommendation from the planning board is for Michael to be appointed as an alternate. His background in the planning board is extensive. And any comment, Cat?
Planning board is recommending that.
Mark?
Playing Boyd's recommending it, then that's fine.
Okay. In that case, I'll make a motion that Michael Sanunu be become a alternate delegate to the planning board.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Hand that right to Kisha so that way it doesn't disappear in my paperwork. Okay, next item is boundary vegetated buffer requirement at three nineteen Piscassic between the Piscassic Road between lots fourteen and fifteen. With all the discussion that has transpired over the past six months in regards to Vernon Family Farm, the lawsuits, a review of the notice of decision of eight December twenty two, planning board meeting, required that Vernon Family Farm shall install a vegetated buffer along a portion of the common property boundary line between Vernon Family Farm and the property located at three nineteen Piscassic. There's supporting documents between three nineteen Piscassic. Newfields, New Hampshire, identified on tax map two eleven is lot fifteen. To the reasonable satisfaction of the current owners and the Newfields Planning Board, vegetated buffer shall be maintained by Vernon Family Farm and its successors and assigns as long as the property is being used for farming purposes. I went back and reviewed the planning board minutes from all of twenty two and in twenty twenty three. And during one of those meetings, Jeremiah Vernon wanted to change that language to maintain that vegetative buffer in perpetuity. And that was in the December twenty two planning board meeting. If you go to Google Earth, you'll see, I do have a photograph there that's attached on the back. That was as of the date on air was no change. That was ten October of twenty twenty four. And if you go back in time, it has not changed since October of twenty twenty to the present. So Google Earth shows that no vegetated buffer has been installed. At the time of the passing of the notice of decision, within that thirty days window, there was no challenge by Vernon Family Farm or objection. Therefore, they waived any right to object to the terms and conditions of condition number nine. The planning board has a history of requiring buffers between properties. They did so between the post office in town and the Stratum Vet. That's what those large antibodies are. They've also required it on Winkler Way there between that and the property that is north of it. That's owned by Brian. And they also inserted it into the separation between Vernon Family Farm at three thirteen Piscassic. To date, so that's twenty two, twenty three, twenty four, it'll be three years. In December, no action has been taken to comply with the terms and conditions of the notice of decision. The planning boards' previous requirements are three foot Iver fights. And this is going to be a subject, I believe, with the planning board to address. So my thought process on this is to forward this to the planning board for their next agenda meeting and get this moving so that we can ensure this requirement of the notice of decision is compliant. Cat, any thoughts?
Sounds right.
Mark?
Uh, one request, if if we can put on these agendas that a footnote on here to just say Vernon Family Farm instead of just simply having three nineteen Piscassic Road, for instance, so that they are flag and that they understand that there being, there's discussion about them so that they can respond. So they can look at the agenda and say, okay, this is obviously something that has to do with us. Uh, this is just an example. So I had that mentioned to me, said, I had no idea that that was even going to be on the agenda. So like, that's worthwhile, that if we have something on an agenda to mention there, if they are being included in a discussion, put their name on there so that they are notified.
Noted. All right. Any other thoughts, input?
I think that would be helpful. And there's been a couple of other meetings I've sat in where people have said, I just found out about this just now. And if my street, my lot lines are being discussed at this meeting, I wish I knew. Someone else mentioned it to me. It just wasn't clear enough on the agenda and that was a different issue. I think that was Tenth Street and his neighbor brought that up. And so I think that we could look for ways to be more clear on the agenda so that if people are directly going to be discussed or their property is going to be discussed, they might be able to figure that out a little easier.
I noted. Okay, anything from the audience?
Mr. Davis? Um, any changes to the land on that part of the parcel should be run by the conservation commission? Because that's part of it.
Is it a change to the land? This was.
Well, this, the reason I'm asking, I feel like any disturbance of the soils possibly should be run by.
I mean, we can CC them and that's not an issue on it and engage them with it. But I would just offer that this was a terms and conditions of the notice of decision back in twenty two. And the CC, you guys were intimately involved with that. So, I mean, there's nothing that's transpired, but I I see no reason not to engage the CC on this.
Just to make sure the buffer that would hopefully be installed for the conditions meets the terms of the easement.
And I thought, and without looking for that, when I reviewed all the notes in the minutes, that was not something that was within my wheelhouse when I looked at it, but I'd wager probably, but I have, fine, we can do that.
Thanks. An email or a letter with all involved would be helpful so that they're reminded that this buffer needs to go up and has to comply according to CONCOMs or the easement requirements, right?
And not having anybody here from the conservation or from the planning board, but discussions that I've had with them in regards to this, that I would wager at the bottom dollar, those are all considered as far as the impact on the conservation. Easement as it exists in terms of conditions, so most certainly engage them to make sure that they're in the loop for this payment. Good? All right. Uh, next item on the agenda is trick or treat. We've had this for the past couple of years. We've gone back and forth on whether it's going to be this day or that day, depending on the full moon, the coriolis effect, high tide. It was suggested that we put trick or treat on the thirty first every year, October thirty first. And then if there's some reason, we can make an exception to move it, but make it the standard procedure that it will be thirty one October. And then if there is something that requires a warrants discussion, we can move forward on that.
I think that's a great idea.
Yeah.
Mark?
Yep.
Chief, do you have any input? Okay. Then what I'll do is I'll make a motion that from here and forever forward, unless there's a great exception, Halloween, trick or treat will always be thirty one October.
One thing, one of the times officially, it's always five to seven PM last year. We made the exception and changed it because the library was having some type of haunted house that wanted a little bit darker. I found out today that they may have something again, but Brittany is on vacation and we sent her an email and called her. So as of right now, we do not know what they're planning. This is the first we're hearing of it. Last time I came and discussed that, so I have no problem with second trick or treat for the thirty first. But the time may be the same as last year, which is five thirty to seven thirty to accommodate the darkness on the latest stages of the night. And there's advantage that too for us as well, where the glare of the sun and the traffic is lighter, obviously, even if it's just half an hour. This road on here is less strict at five than it is at five.
Okay, so I I think that's easily dealt with now that we've got it locked in for the thirty first. And as we work our way through and you become more cognizant of what's transpiring, we'll be able to address that and come up with a reservation. Okay. Town Hall fascia. So when Gary Morissette, the mason, was doing the work, which he finished on time and with this one small bump of of the bid price, he was up here and he noticed that the fascia was totally rotten up and above the eastern side of Town Hall. We are under a time crunch times of the essence on this, as I sent out in the email, just to give you a heads up, because this is all subject to complying with the rain garden state DES DDA deadlines. And we could not wait to get this done to meet those requirements for the drop dead dates, for monies exchanged, et cetera. I talked to Munch and he broke off from another job he was going to do to come and take a look at it. He said he could start it. And because of the time and the essence, I gave him a green light. And so I, but I did want to discuss it. When he got up there today, it was thought that he would be able to open up and cut out the rotten sections and scab solid in. And then he was going to line it with, cover it with aluminum roll all the way from four to half. However, it is so rotten that it's it's not salvageable. So they've already replaced it out tonight. They've replaced about the first half with the AZAC or synthetic material like that, both for the fascia and for the underboard. And that will solve that problem. Then talking to Bill in reserve about it, he's going to have six inch gutters put up there with screen guards and also with a contract to have them checked every year to ensure that we don't go through that. Other than that, we have put the outside of the building in exceptional condition. Gary Morissette, the mason, would honestly remark what solid condition this building is in for ninety six years old and the quality of the workmanship that went into it. So I think we are very close to wrapping up maintaining the structure. And I think that was essential that we did. That said, between the line item for the budget for building maintenance is twenty five hundred dollars. We had the warrant article of twenty thousand, which is twenty two thousand five hundred. And we are now, after Morissette may agree some work that Brian did with his equipment and some of that will, but a lot of that was built for the rain garden process, but some of it came to the town. As of now, we're down to forty six hundred dollars for covering much. So, which means that we are going to be on a tight budget for the rest of the year as far as building maintenance projects. But that's the update on SaaS of where we're at. Any questions or comments from the board? Yeah. Mark?
No, but just if there are some other ways to dip into the till if we need to, you know, for emergency purposes, maybe we can look at that.
Well, there are ways we can do it if we run into an emergency, but plan spending, we are approaching the end of the, the end of the line.
Okay.
Okay. All right, so Town Hall fascia is taken care of. Uh, let's see, what do we got? Got that, got that done. All right. So the next question is the magical mystical resurrection of the camper at three ninety nine Piscassic.
Yeah.
Mark, you want to start that?
Sure. So for those of you who haven't seen the abandoned property at three ninety nine Piscassic, there was a camper there.
Let me correct that, C's for tax lien.
C's for tax, yeah. Uh, the camper was then thereby abandoned on the property. And having some experience with flipping properties in the past, I had a camper on the property. I put it out for someone to take, simply to take so they could put, make it a chicken coop or whatever the case might be. I didn't foresee this person that that volunteered to take the camper to actually go and register it or look for a title. And because of that, he was told that we cannot, he cannot get a title because we, as the town, did not have the right to give that away.
And I I'm going to interrupt you there. We did, it was forfeited property. It was town's property. We don't have, we did not have a title on it because we didn't need to pursue a title until which time we were going to have, give it to somebody. That was, that was, so I guess it, my question there is.
According to this Concord, they're saying that it's, it's town cannot.
Well, if he was going, if he was not going to try to register.
That's right.
We could do that.
Yeah.
If he was going to try and register, then it would require it. So I guess the question is, so then you didn't think about the guy trying to register before he picked it up? You didn't consider that?
Well, the, the condition that it was in, we were thinking that it was going to be just, you know, like I said, a chicken coop or something like that. Uh, now, and when you look at it, he completely cleaned it up and it's in good condition. That being said, lesson learned, we'll have to go through a process of having it towed through a designated tow service and go through an auction process through that towing service, as Sue had mentioned.
Well, what he has, it has to be to a registered recovering entity such as Cruzat or another entity as such. They can go about applying for a title. And at which time they get the title, then it will be viable for somebody to acquire it. This return caused a little bit of consternation on Saturday when all of a sudden it appeared. The, this is going to it's going to entail some expense. The only recovery on that is all money's expended to make this happen will be recoverable at which time we sell the property, which will be in twenty twenty seven. So we've been keeping a running total of the monies that we've expended on, it'll be May of twenty seven is when we can sell it. We've been keeping a running total of the funds, so we have the tax lien to cover. We have Brian's expense in cleaning the property up, minor expenses in locking, putting locks on the building, getting the windows secured where they getting the windows secured where they were broken for good animals from getting in. And those are all the recoverable. Um. It would just be a lot easier for you.
Of course, of course, but it's deemed as a vehicle, I mean, by the state, so uh I wish the circumstances were different, but uh they're not, so.
So would the restoring of it be an expense that would be recoverable to this person if they are not in a position to be able to uh purchase it? At auction?
I don't think we would necessarily owe him uh or restoring it, but I think if we can give him a heads up that it will be up will be available for him to obtain it, that's fair enough.
Did he uh communicate with you or attempt to communicate with you prior to bringing it back to?
No, that was the, that was why I said, what is this? I kind of drove past and said, is it? I, the, looking at the condition of it, I thought, did somebody park a new Sprinter in here? And I guess I could have looked at it a little more closely. And then I finally, I dug through the messages because I had about fifty messages when we did this out. And I reached out to him and I said, Ed, did you return this? And he was like, yes, I did, and explained what happened.
Yeah, it would have been nice if he had given us a heads up.
Of course.
Because I know the police department spent time up there uh trying to track down what the status was.
Yeah.
In regards to that, and uh, I guess the lesser of this is due diligence and uh, consider all possible contingencies uh for future reference on this instead of getting bit the backside like we did on this. All right, so uh my thought process is uh we'll give this to you once again for action as far as uh
Sure.
Talking to Cruzak or another garage, get it in tow, get it entitled established on it.
Yeah.
And then uh, once we get the title on it, let's uh sit down and have a conversation about possible courses of action on it before we move ahead.
Sure.
At that, does that work for the board?
Yes.
Anything from the audience? That case will consider the immaculate resurrection of the camper at three ninety nine Piscasson closed for the evening. Uh, Chief?
Fall Festival update, just for the record, there will be no requirement for a special event permit in regards to the same because it is a town function. Give me knowledge, Goose.
Um, either it was late July or even maybe early August, Charlotte came in regarding celebration committee's plan, the celebration Fall Festival on Saturday, September twentieth. Um, Police Department was responsible, obviously, the fall permit, the rules are on Main Street, State, which we went ahead and did. Uh, which was granted. On last Tuesday, the twelfth, Charlotte came in and told Sue that there was going to be no Fall Festival uh this year, various reasons. For, well, obviously, Sue, the Department of Police, and we kind of pushed off to the notification of the public regarding that. And um meeting with Charlotte and Fire Chief Buxton, uh, O B Sue, um, the Police Department was willing to coordinate and pick up where uh where where this event needs to be because I I have seen how good this event is out there, so. We are planning on voting for the Fall Festival. We have advanced, yes, food trucks that are pending. Um, we have several things that we're working on. Uh, we are about four or five weeks away. Um, so if there's any rumors out there that there's no Fall Festival here, that is not true. Um, once we get everything finalized, we'll create a fire. We will send it out through the town email, uh, post on social media. And obviously, uh, advertising on signboards and at school, uh, send it out as well, so. As of right now, and I don't see anything changing, the Fall Festival is moving forward.
How'd your conversations go this afternoon? Did you have some conversations about one o'clock today or can you go, was that food trucks?
We did not, they they may have called, but uh left a message, but like I said, we are working on that.
Okay.
We find places, and we have some options if that falls through.
Okay.
Ideally, we want to go with food vendors. I obviously know it's a very busy time of year. Uh, this stuff needs to be scheduled well in advance, so we actually look around, but we do have some options if
Okay.
it does not happen, meaning food wise.
Okay. Any questions or comments from the board?
Thank you to everyone who's jumping in to help make it happen.
Comments from y'all? Nope. All right, we'll consider that closed. Chief, if you did so good, we're going to give you another one.
Sure, I'll take this one.
E-bikes.
Not only here in town, but obviously uh in the area. Um, e-bikes, and I don't want to get into all the types, classifications, because it's very, very confusing. Uh, kids have taken stickers off, um, which we can't identify what type of uh e-bike it is. So long story short, we had a problem. Um, every community's had a problem. There was an accident, they posted online last week regarding Portsmouth. Um, as you can see, if you're out of town and you see all kinds of these bikes, electric bikes, some with pedals, some low pedals. If they were doing what they were supposed to be doing, it probably wouldn't be a problem, but when they're cutting in and out of traffic, almost getting hit. And I have received more calls pertaining to these e-bikes in the last three, four weeks. And I have had, got a lot of vapor complaints on this road in my four years. Um, we had a accident last couple of weeks ago, uh, where a female fell off some type of e-bike. It was on a Sunday, had a runway up by the urban, uh, so it was mobile. Um, so we have basically the ones without pedals are completely illegal. You can't be driving on the road, it's considered an O H R V. A lot of them that we're having, that's what it is, they're coming up from Exeter because Exeter is not dealing with them in downtown. They're coming through either eighty five, the uh Fort Rock Trails. Uh, we had a complaint last night over in Finn, which is where the D H P's didn't put where the trails come out. We had two um tonight and the kids are from town and said, yeah, we we got the message through our parents, we know they're illegal. We've been staying out of downtown. They were riding on eighty seven up by Bald Hill. Um, we're trying to educate the public. We're not trying to, you know, ruin anyone's good time, but we're also trying to make everybody safe. And uh, we've had a few uh instances where they've been cutting in and out of traffic, almost getting hit uh by vehicles on eighty five and eighty seven. Um, so we've put some information out through Sue's email list as well as our social media. Um, and we've actually put a link on our Facebook, actually, on our website, a post on our website, Bay, regarding different classifications, what's uh what's not allowed on state laws. I don't make these laws. Uh, you know, obviously, you know, my my job, the police department's job is to make sure the public is safe. Um, and some people, and they're not all juveniles, some normal adults too, um, they are riding these bikes recklessly. And uh, luckily, we haven't had a major incident. Uh, but we wanted to put this out to the public to educate on the public regarding this because we don't want to get out of control to a point where it's going to be impossible to bring that in.
So you're at this point of working on the education aspect of it. And at some point, you're going to probably have to take, do you see a stronger enforcement?
If if we have repeat offenders and they disregard what the officers are telling them, then we will have a different approach. It's not going to be a solid first. We have options, so hopefully this can go down. I don't want to go down, but we also have to uh keep the community safe, keep the people who are riding their bikes safe. And we also have to keep our word, uh, these people are being told that this is your warning, this is the law, this is the rules, and and I honestly, this has come, these rules and these key bikes blown up this summer in this area. They have blown up in other areas throughout, you know, the last year or so. You know, Hampton Beach, you know, New H Chambers, um, stuff like that, but it seems like everybody has one of these e-bikes now, it's a regular pedal bike. Um, but it is what it is, so uh we're trying to educate the public, trying to keep people safe. And I I have full confidence that I think once everybody knows what their goals are and everyone, you know, some of them are allowed, you know, they're up on the sidewalks and stuff like that. I have no problem, as long as when I could play this from Warkers and stuff, I'd rather have it on the sidewalks than on the street. You know, there's a lot of traffic coming out here, but when you're going in the street, cutting out from traffic, making the traffic stop, that's, even if it's not me, like it's a regular pedal bike, you see somebody doing that. You know, obviously, our job is to to stop it, educate the person, persons, and make sure it doesn't happen again.
Bottom line is, we don't need any young adult get hit by a car, run over by a car. Injured, made, or even killed. And so with that in mind, I totally agree with your attitude of let's educate, and then if we need to be a little more forceful. Yeah.
I think um warnings are an excellent place to start, education's a great place to start, and then really brainstorming next steps before we need them.
Before what?
We need the next steps, being clear what they're going to be. So we can let folks know what to expect.
Um, just one comment, I've seen them on the rail trails, so they, you know, they're moving fast.
Some of them are riding on the rail trail.
Yeah.
Um, not knowing the types sometimes because the stickers.
Right.
They have low pedals, stuff like that. Um, I spoke in a fishing game, um, there's some recommendations of maybe posted the rail trails. I guarantee you, a lot of these parents and kids, who majority of mine, I know some of them are riding, but majority are juveniles, um, you know, riding these, a lot of them, I guarantee they probably don't even realize they're not allowed. You know, but that's up the fishing game and it requires forces as well, uh, you know, but.
My wife and I were riding a bike, so we saw a couple, and she was like, look at these Type A. I said, that's not Type A, that's that's an e-bike.
There's different classifications.
Going thirty miles an hour.
And the different classifications, uh, the three different classifications allow the O C G E's, which is basically out of class electric vehicles, those are the ones that do not have real uh pedals. Excuse me, pedals, those are the ones that are not allowed on the rail trails.
Because it's a motorola.
That are not allowed on the rail, the ones and twos are allowed, and I don't want to confuse people because it is very confusing. Um, but, you know, these people were selling these bikes at these bike shops, you know, they you know, every area is going to differ, you know, the stance a lot. You know, I can't speak for any other state, but this is what our rail trail rules are. And this is what our RSA's are regarding bicyclists and e-bikes and stuff like that, so. Um, basically, you know, the officers have been informed of what it is and what's expected. And it seems like, you know, we dealt with, like, two tonight, it's almost on a daily basis now, we're dealing with some type of complaint either by the motorists who are driving through residents or at home, or the officers out in the road and seeing something, so uh, we're just trying to.
Make people aware, yeah.
All right. Anything from the audience? All right, moving on from e-bikes, thank you, Chief. Good luck with that. Um, let's move on to Town Hall Rental. We have a town in Newfields Town Hall Rental Agreement. And it's Tom Welton for uh, let's see, sixth October. And it's a resident, seventy five dollars, non-alcoholic function with a security deposit of a hundred dollars, two checks sitting right here. And a number of people anticipated about a hundred and fifty. And see if I can read this. New Newfields and Newmarket Republican Town Committee, so I see no reason not to move forward with it. I'll make a motion that we accept this.
Second.
All in favor? Thank you, Senator Mark, click to check.
Hand it over, sure.
There's a paper clip here. All right, uh, we have a special event permit application from uh Dan Parsonak with uh Buddy River Smokehouse. And it's a couple of events in there on sixteen August, Kids Day, twenty three August, uh, movie night, and fourteen September Car Show. Uh, the special event permit ordinance that we're redoing is fifty dollars per event. This form, which will be revised, that the three events, it's a hundred dollars tops. So he got a deal on this one, okay? And uh, next time, we'll stick our hand in his pockets and get the other fifty dollars. So uh is he addressed any of this with you, Wayne?
Yeah.
There was events, yeah. No.
Okay.
Uh, there was the car show that was earlier, like in July that came down. Uh, we had no issues, obviously, it was a bad day, so.
So I'm a little curious here because one of it is uh August sixteenth and today is the nineteenth. So. What happened, Keisha, I can't hear you.
Didn't we get the signatures for the?
Signed, yeah.
The kid today?
It was the thirty days' most.
It was eighty five.
No, I just bought that recently, but I did get all the signatures prior to.
Okay, I remember this. Yeah, okay, I remember, yeah. And then uh twenty three uh August, so we need to jump on on that one and make sure that all the entities that have to review it, review it, and.
Yeah, I, we signed off the events.
Okay.
Passed anything, whatever the rules are now, you know, it's going to be thirty days, thirty uh personally having a conversation with him. No, and I don't think that's going to be quiet.
Well, let's talk about for a second, I think that is, we talked about that in detail when we read the special event permit ordinance. And I think there needs to be that liaison with the police department and fire department. And when we look, I'll look at it, review it again, I'll ask the board to do so so that we make sure we're not missing that uh step. Because I think to do things like this requires liaison with the P D as opposed to just reading those points in there so that you can get a handle on what's required, Jeff can get a handle on it if necessary. And even Brian, if it's required for him. So that we have maybe make some changes in the language to ensure there is face to face contact. All right, in any case, uh, I'll make a note of that here in a second, but I'll make a motion, we accept these uh events from uh Buddy River.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Just one. All right. I think we can do this without, as you see, come up. So we have to buy a new voting machine. Uh, it is exactly the same but different from the voting machine we have now. The one that we have now is getting rather long in the tooth. This one still utilizes paper ballots and is a counting machine. It is not an electronic voting machine where you type in on the glass who your candidate is, you still fill out the ballot, and then it's slipped into the machine just like we currently do uh for all elections. Sue wants this one, it's compact, it folds up, it makes her happy. And since she's uh working this, we need to get this one. The other thing is, we will get a rebate uh back from the state covering a substantial portion of the purchase of the new voting machine. So uh, in that case, unless there are some questions, I'll make a motion, we go with what Sue wants. I think that's proven on our part. Uh, do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor? Uh, next item on the agenda is uh Burning Family Farm has uh set up for another event on the fourth of October. It's going to be a comedy night. Mae's Mobile Cocktail Application uh has to be re uh signed. And what we did is we took a copy of the letter that we approved earlier in the year, changed the date on it. But before we we submit this letter, I want to bring it to the board for a vote uh so we can move forward on that. If there's no questions, I will make a motion that we uh sign off on this for for October twenty five. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All right. In favor?
Aye.
Any question that you all said, Keisha? Uh. Take a look at next month's meeting dates. You already set for the second of September. You already set for the second of September. Are you a minimum? You're going the twenty-third?
You said it's September?
Yes, sir. So it'll be the second and the twenty-third?
I think that's fine, it's a later day.
You good, Mark?
Yeah.
Good, okay, second and the twenty-third for September Select Board meetings. All set, Keisha? Oh, I know why. All right, prior meeting minutes, uh. I'd like to hold off on that until the next meeting if we can, if you guys are minimal for that, okay, so we'll postpone that. All right, other, uh, down to open items.
I just wanted to provide an update on the Main Street, uh, Traffic Safety Group, the meeting that we had with DOT. And it, um, I want to say thank you again to Chief Young for bringing everyone to the table and facilitating that meeting in a really. Uh, thorough and efficient way, and for all of the people that attended, uh, speaking up, sharing their concerns, their thoughts. And, um, ideas, super helpful for DOT, um, they actually offered some ideas and resources. And my homework from that meeting is connecting with the RPC, the Rockingham, uh, Planning Commission. And I've connected with David Walker, and I'll be following up with Scott Vogel. And likely a follow-up meeting will be scheduled, um, together with Chief Young and will. Include, potentially this will be a larger meeting and include, uh, public to attend together to find out what is available. Um, for the town and to look at, um, grant funding that's actually out there to support towns to address. Safety issues like this, um, in meaningful ways, so it doesn't commit us to anything. It just, um, affords us a broader view of opportunities. So that as a town, we can make decisions about next steps and where we might really want to go with all of this. So it is not a dead issue in any way, um, and one of the things that came out of the meeting that I think is important to reiterate is. If we were to do a speed study, which we may or may not do. Uh, there is zero risk that the speed limit would get raised if it turns out that people are driving faster. Uh, not slower, um, no speed changes are ever made by the state without the town's. Participation and their desire to do so, they don't go up or down, um, resulting from a study. And so I think there was a little bit of an idea of fear that if we did that, it could get raised, that won't happen. Uh, without the town fully wanting that to happen. So that was a, a fear that was debunked in the meeting. And some resources were talked about, um, that may be absolutely zero cost or very low cost. To look at culture and education and traffic calming strategies and supporting the momentum that already exists. To, uh, have more traffic safety in the downtown area and looking at what's happening with e-bikes. It's probably gonna fold right in when we're having conversations with the planning commission, because I'm sure the towns they're supporting to address. Traffic safety is, um, is probably turning up issues with e-bikes as well, so. Any and all ideas and resources, especially, uh, grant money that might be helpful to the town. To defray costs of any changes we might like to make, whether it's signage or campaigns, uh, will be. A potential resource we might decide to use when we learn more about it. And if there's anything Chief Young that you'd like to add about that meeting?
Regarding, it needs to be added, uh, citizens or then with the state with this incident, so I think at this point, uh.
One more time.
Seeking, obviously, uh, you reached out to our, you know, planning commission and looking at whatever they suggest. Recommend and stuff like that.
Awesome. Uh, we have a notice from, uh, Hutchinson Ceiling that, uh, today they were issued another permit by, uh. State DES, uh, to operate their manufacturing systems, and it's just basically a notification for us that, uh. They've been greenlit to continue in business. Uh, awning replacement, uh, for the three awnings downstairs, uh, that's in work. They are torn up, they've taken some hits during the masonry project, uh, nothing to. Note because in fact they were torn up, so what's been done to them is just kind of beat up an old. Old awning that needs replacing. Uh, Badger Park update, the last, uh, in regards to the veterans, the last step on that. Will take place on Friday with a meeting to get the final paperwork squared away with the government. The, uh, solar lighting equipment has been ordered for the flag so that it, uh, complies with, uh. Code and federal law in regards to all colors have to be illuminated at nighttime or taken down, uh, at sunset. The, uh, this week. Primex came through our insurer, they did a safety and professional standard review of both the police department and the fire department. And it's just the, uh, heads-up event that they do as a courtesy for their, uh, customers. And as we discussed when this previously rose its head, that there is no, uh, ability for that, for Primax to use any, uh. Deficiencies or weak spots in the survey to impact our, uh, insurance rates in the coming future. Chief, do you want to add anything to that?
No, we should have the report from what the assessment stated in a couple of weeks, so, um. Whenever that kind of scroll, I assume probably prior, right before Labor Day or mid-afternoon. Uh, that we forward it, forward it obviously to the select board and, uh, we can set it for an agenda item and we can discuss it. Public.
Okay. All right, it covers that. Uh, one of the other things is, Mark, you sent out an email today and that came out at, uh, six forty. Regards to clarification procedure of town meetings on Microsoft Teams. Uh, the big issue that transpired last night as far as not being able to broadcast. Was there was not an agenda forwarded to Sue or Keisha.
Right.
Allowing them to set up, uh, the system. Uh, the, the link was already published and it was all set to go. But that fell through the cracks, and I'll get into the conservation committee aspect, commission aspect of it, commission. Commission aspect of that momentarily, I was just checking to see if you were paying attention, uh. The, I just had a question, uh, so I'm kind of looking for some justification here, the source of this procedure, here's the procedure for scheduling. Uh, where did you pull this together and how did you pull this together, Mark?
What's the question?
Um, here is the pre-procedure for scheduling and announcing, uh. I mean, some of it, but some of it, did you talk with Sue and Keisha about this before you put this out?
Oh, that's a standard procedure though, to, uh, if you're creating an agenda, sending it over to Sue and or Keisha.
Yeah.
So that, uh, the, um, Microsoft Teams invite. Can be sent out.
And so that's post, that's what's posted on the website for the link to kick up. Right, yeah. Uh, the only thing I'm curious about, the calendar invitation, which includes the agenda, the meeting link will be sent out to all town officials and meeting members. So Sue and Keisha are putting the link on the agenda and, uh.
For instance, we get an invite, um, when this, uh, meeting occurs. And so they would get an invite, uh, a Microsoft Teams invite.
So at this point, you're asking them to send an email to everybody that's in the meeting, town meeting member?
Correct, right.
When is Town Hall Streams gonna be online? Our new, I mean, not Town Hall Streams, the replacement for Town Hall Streams, the website we talked about, when's that gonna be on?
Uh, that will, it'll take some time, so we got an email back from, um. From Civic Plus, and they said, we'll be getting back to you on the upgrade.
Okay, so are we talking months, do you think?
Uh, probably, probably a month or two at least to, uh, to get them to. Get up to speed, but I'll, I'll nudge them to see we get a date.
Okay, cause what, what is, I'm pondering here. Is, are we asking Sue and Keisha to set to, cause what's your procedure now, Keisha, you post? With the agenda, how do you handle that?
Yes.
For the record.
I do all the links ahead, so it's up there for the year. Um, the links are up already for the year. But the connection for this is done the day of the meeting, because that's the time frame that we were given that needs to be done.
Yeah.
So when conservation or planning board, Sue gets depending on conservation sends us the agenda, then I posted it online. To the website and then posted in town and at the.
That's why that email went out, to let them know that, uh, they have to send that agenda. To Sue or Keisha so that an invite gets sent to them for the meeting, so.
So you're not asking, so you're not asking for additional emails from?
No, no. So they understand, it was more for the concom, because I don't think they knew how, how the system worked, so.
Well, it, okay, all right, um. Because I think once, my conversation with Sue is, once we get the new system in place. Then people will be able to opt in, in town for, to receive all emails and all notices and all that.
That's just, that's just for the, uh, for those that are, uh, running the meeting. So they'll get an invite, whoever is in that meeting would get those invites, not the entire town or.
Okay, yeah, okay, got it, makes sense now.
Yeah.
Uh, one of the things, uh, and the other thing, why we mentioned Town Hall Streams, they wanted, there was their equipment that had to be sent back to them?
Yes, so I believe that was sent back out to them.
It was a box, whatever that.
Yeah.
The decoder or the magic code or the?
Yeah, that was sent back.
Okay, so we're all set with them? And we're all set with the billing for them, there's no, they don't want any future money, they're not, you got that squared away, okay, so that account is closed. Okay, um, as a couple of items on the Conservation Commission, at the committee. So Jeff Kuchar apparently resigned a couple of weeks ago. And, uh, the notice did not make it to the town office until this morning, when, uh, after I saw Forrest send the email last night. To Sue, so one of the things that I'm going to request that I think is appropriate. Is that all resignations from all town boards and committees goes to both the select board and the chairman of the committee, so that way we're cognizant of the fact. And I think that would have probably, uh, triggered everybody going, oh, okay, we need to be on the lookout here for the agenda, which we precluded. Some of the nasty Graham emails that I got last night about the meeting not being available, um. So I think that'll take care of that, and I'll get that email sent out and I'll CC you guys on it, so if you're good to go with that. Mark, you good with that?
Sure.
Okay, uh, we've talked about that, talked about that. All right, uh, oh, one of the, uh, points of order, so reviewing the founding documents for the Conservation Commission. There's not a co-chair on that position, it is a vice chair, and it sounds like we're splitting hairs, but these little attention detail things will keep us. If we try and follow that, keep us from getting in a box with the auditors and just setting the tone and the trend of how we do business here in the town. Um, now, one of the items that I wanted to touch base with you specifically on, Mark, and I save it because we've always concom stuff at the end. Discussions, uh, with CSX in regards to that piece of land there, one of the things that was talked about when, uh. John Hayden brought this up, or was it, uh, Sean McGowan? It's the fact that it may or may not be available for purchase, but to see also if it was available to get a use agreement with them. I haven't seen that language in any of the discussions, so I think that needs to be included in that.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and I would say that, uh, my mindset is toss this right back to the Conservation Committee Commission. To pursue this and come to the select board where they have found options for the board to move forward on. We have enough on our plate and agenda meeting twice a month and all the stuff that we have to do. I believe this fully falls within the bailiwick of conservation to pursue this, to explore it. Find options, find solutions, and then present those solutions to the board instead of us. Having to do basically what I see as being their responsibility.
I think what, uh, what happened, or the comment was, let's ask them, you should ask them first. You should ask CSX, uh, if they're even willing to entertain this before we start. Uh, digging into this and putting in the time to do any of the research on. What the, uh.
Well, one of the.
Are, et cetera.
One of the confusing points last night that Forrest brought up is that I had engaged with CSX on the Beaver Rail Trail thing. Uh, CSX had absolutely nothing to do with the Beavers and the rail trails.
Mm-hmm.
So there was no engagement with CSX on that. Uh, but I, I find exploring an opportunity for, uh, increased acreage for use by the town to fall squarely within the bailiwick. By the Conservation Commission, and then I see them, once they have done their research and determine whether there are options available. Presented to the select board, for the select board to decide whether or not to move forward. Instead of us doing the legwork, which again, I feel is fully within the responsibility of the Conservation Commission.
So, okay, so what kind of options should we be asking them to?
Like used versus purchase, which would be less expensive, obviously, for the town.
And if they do choose that, then, because the word is CSX has no real affinity for unloading property. Until they absolutely determine, it's like they still have the right of way for all the rail trails, if they want to put tracks back in, they have the ability to do so. If they want to open up the property, that's something that they may be totally amenable to, um, and I think that's. As the executive branch, we make the decisions on that, but if you look at the commissions and the, and the committees. They, I would say they are more the legislative branch, whose responsibility is to come up with possible solutions to present to the board.
The legwork, if you will.
Yeah, yes ma'am. Mr. Lawrence?
Yes, being outside with, uh, of the committees that deal with this, but aware of, of the discussions. My thoughts was that the town would just send a letter to CSX and express interest. And allow for them to respond to that, but if nothing else, there will be something in file. Whether it's the Conservation Commission that, that drafts the letter, perhaps the select board would be. Wise to have signed it if it's going to them. That's just what was crossing my mind, is this discussing.
And, and that's what they were saying, I think there'll be more teeth to it if, if it comes from us.
Well, uh, if it's. Got it, yes, the select board is perhaps a part of the, uh.
That, and I don't disagree with any of that, but the point that I, I'll try and be more succinct on it, exactly what parcel, exactly what. All that legwork should be done and presented to the board instead of putting it in the select board's lap to do all that research and homework. When the Conservation Commission can draft it, pull it together, present it to the select board, and if it looks like a viable option, the board supports it. Then we can move forward with that document.
So I'll bounce it back to them and let's, we'll get some of the details, which is. What we wanted, right, but, uh, it seemed, uh, I got a, a shoulder shrug, that's. So I'll, I'll press them a little bit.
You concur with that approach, Ken?
I, I think it makes sense and that it, to me, seems like how committees are supposed to work.
Yeah.
So.
I'll go back to.
All right, um. And I already talked about, I will put a, uh, email out to all the budgets to make sure that they introduce themselves. Uh, just because last night, when we were watching, when we were watching it this morning, Sue McKinnon was, uh, the whole kit and caboodle there. And, uh, it also works on making sure that we have people that want to speak, come to the microphone or in the vicinity of it. Because even when you were sitting in what, second row there, you were very garbled.
Oh, I was, yeah.
Yeah, and so the microphone is just not picking it up if you're not sitting there, um. Anybody else have anything they want to throw in our direction? Except for tomatoes, rocks, mud, et cetera.
I have, I have a follow-up call with Stevie Ebbich on the part, he was, he assigned some homework to me from the audit report. And I have a meeting scheduled with Stevie Ebbich about that.
Okay, Mark, you got anything else?
Nope, all good.
Turn out the lights. That case, do I hear a motion? Do I hear?
I made a motion to end this meeting.
Second.
Yeah, I second, all in favor of adjournment?
Aye.
Meeting's closed, it is. Twenty twenty-nine, eight twenty-nine. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, everybody that attended, thank you.